Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the October 1st, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. I have you please stand for the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, I thank you so much for our great community. We live in interesting and challenging times. There's so much that is going on in our world here as a city, but across the country and just everywhere it seems. We know in the end that you have ultimate authority and control of the situation. Keep us strong. Keep us focused on you, Lord. And just, I guess, just that then. Thank you, Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kind of a light agenda this evening. The City Council did meet earlier. We started this evening at 6:00. We did have an executive session, which pertained to an issue on the agenda for this evening, so we'll get to that in a little bit. But Randy, do we have any new employee introductions this evening yet?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Next on the agenda is citizen input and community announcements. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the council on non-agenda items. If you are wanting to address the council, please go to the podium there behind Doctors Warren and Perman and fill out the yellow card and bring it here to Maya, and she'll make sure that I get it. You are given three minutes to address the council. If we can address the situation or provide an answer, we will. If we can't, then we'll, myself and the city staff will get together and figure out a path forward. If you cannot be here in the City Council meeting, but you want to zoom in and do that, please notify City Hall by 4:30 on the day of our City Council meetings. I have a couple of cards. Two of those are for things later in the agenda, Mr. Bristol and Mr., is it Cobal?
Yes.
Okay. I will get to you guys here later in the agenda. The cards I do have, I have Dr. Warren. Would you like to come up and address the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Nice to see you.
It's good to see you as well, sir.
Well, I'm here to address the issue of a Third Court annex over in our business court. And it's basically because the way it is right now, the street is our private property, except for the fact that it's pretty much utilized by a lion's share from the general public because of the access to the logging road or the logging trail, and, you know, people like to go there. And not only that, it's accessed by, you know, the police and the fire department for whatever reasons or emergencies that they have. And the way it stands now, it's like the occupancy there by the street traffic is basically trespass. We tolerate it, and it's not something at this point that's come to a head, but it's going to start to be, I think, at some point. And for that very reason, I think it would be a good idea for the city to take over that street and use and annex that street as city property. I guess that's about all I have to say about that.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Warren. Appreciate that. You're good, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Perman's next.
Thanks, Brian. I wanted to give you guys just a copy to spread out on the very top. I'll take one minute from Dr. Trent.
No, you've got three.
The top of the paper is a plat, and the top of the paper is the original plat that was submitted to the county and the City Council who approved it. There is not one thing on there about annexation of the logging road or pathway. The original design was for a private road in a private commercial development of professional office space. It went back to the planning department, and they converted a private road to a public road 18 years ago. With the annexation to the logging road and the open to traffic and open to pathways and the huge easement that was put in, that was all from the planning department. It's a public road, and it's been a public road for 18 years. A public road is defined as any road or street that is under the jurisdiction of public authority and maintained for public travel. This includes any road that is regularly openly traveled by the general public, regardless of its dimensions. This is your city bus two weeks ago for an hour and a half on Third Court. Again, Third Court use of traffic on a cul-de-sac. I have put together a proposal, and I hope you seriously look at the proposal. I think it's fair. As lot owners, we're willing to put some money back into the road to assure it to be a brand-new road that would cost over $1 million to build today. And that's from Camby Excavation, and that's from the Geotech Company, who drilled holes for us to reassure that this road is built to a perfect level for its traffic. Very adequate. And by adding what we're willing to add to it before it goes to the city, makes this road work for over 25 years with not a thing to do to it. This road is one-third used by the public, who want to get to the logging road. The other third is all the vehicles, buses still using it, traffic, vehicles from the city still using it. The only third that was planned was the third getting to the private offices. But two-thirds of its use over 18 years has been outside the original parameter of what that plat and this commercial development was for. I hope we get a work session to further discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perman. Randy, can we have a word with our transit director about, I mean, an hour and a half seems excessive. I understand if it's 10, 15 minutes, if we're waiting to pick up somebody that's using the doctor's offices there or whatever, but an hour and a half seems excessive. We can have a conversation with them on that. I appreciate it.
Good feedback. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. Okay. The rest of the yellow cards I have are for later in the agenda. Moving to item four this evening, the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, may I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the approval of the September 3rd, 2025 City Council regular meeting minutes.
Is that you, Counselor Davis? Thank you. Motion made by Council President Hensley and seconded by Counselor Davis to approve the consent agenda, which include the minutes of the September 3rd, 2025 City Council regular meeting. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes. Those have been great. Next up on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. This public hearing is regarding our housing production strategy update and to consider Resolution Number 1443, a resolution approving the city, sorry, approving the Camby Housing Production Strategy. The public hearing, so the matter presently before the hearing body requires a public hearing. All interested persons in the in attendance shall be heard on the matter. This public hearing was noticed, and those who wish to speak were instructed to contact the city recorder. We did, we've received one request to speak at this time, I think is all that we have. Those people that are interested in testifying as either proponents or opponents may indicate your desire to speak by raising your hands at this time or handing a card to the city recorder. I think I just have the one card from Mr. Bristol, unless there's anyone else. For longer presentations, proponents and opponents may buy time from one another. In so doing, those either in favor or opposed may allocate their time to be, to a spokesperson who will represent the entire group. All questions must be directed through the mayor. Any evidence to be considered must be submitted to the hearing body for public access. All written testimony received both for and against shall be summarized by staff and presented briefly to the hearing body during the staff report. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. There'll be a staff report. There'll be questions, if any, by the hearing body or by staff. And then I will open it up for, open up the public hearing for testimony. So proponents, those that are for, will be given three minutes to share their thoughts, and opponents will also be given three minutes. I will close the public hearing. Any further questions by the hearing body, discussion by the hearing body? And then a decision shall be made by the hearing body at the close of the hearing, or the matter will be continued to a date certain in the future. This will be the only notice of that date you will receive. Does anyone have any questions about the procedure of the hearing? All right, then we will go into the staff presentation. Evening, Don. Emma, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. We're here tonight about the housing production strategy. And I wanted to introduce Jody Barry Elser-Hammon. She's been on before, but she is behind the scenes here, but there may be some input that she provides as well in this process. I wanted to give an overview and context to kind of set the framework here about what is the purpose of this? Why are we doing this? What is the aspirational objective around this? I think there may be some considerations here that I think will help in the discussion as we go further with that. So housing production strategies are strategies that are based on our housing needs analysis that has been adopted. So we have a 20-year forecasted housing needs analysis in the city of Camby. That has a spectrum of housing costs related to it, ranging from market rate housing, that's traditional homes, to housing that is less, more attached product and that has a different range of value for rent and for purchasing property. We're in a housing crisis as most of Oregon is at this point, and part of the state's requirement from the Department of Land Conservation and Development is for us to look at strategies over a 20-year period that we can do to help with the situation of providing more affordability. I'd say it's more affordability than affordability, because I don't believe the city can actually solve the issue by itself. But this is something every city in Oregon is dealing with. Malala just went through their process. Happy Valley just went through their process. And so this, really in terms of context, we've chosen 15 strategies. We've looked at other comparable jurisdictions. Those strategies range from code updates that we were planning to look at as part of our code update process to financial considerations. As we go through this presentation, I don't want the context to be misconstrued, however, on the financial pieces of this, given the fact that the city has limited resources here. The state did, DLCD staff did say we needed to have those considerations. We put in, we believe, sideboards for those considerations, for financial considerations, for system development charge waivers or partial waivers, and for use and for reductions of construction excise tax. And those would be qualified affordable housing product types over the next 20 years. And our vision is there may be just a few of those over the next 20 years. So not to skip too far ahead, that qualified housing product would be something that has a management structure around it, like Habitat for Humanity that's in perpetuity. Habitat actually, you end up with a fee ownership in the end of that program. Or faith-based program, which would be another option, where you would have a, maybe a mainline church that would end up supporting something like this, and they would manage this and have the structure around that. This is not really intended to be something that is a free-for-all in any way, and council would have complete authority over these items. This is a framework, and so the implementation of this is going to be over the next four years. We have technically eight years to complete this, but we've chosen a midpoint of four years to have most of these strategies completed. This does have some teeth to it in terms of the DLCD process, and it has gotten more rigorous from the start. Previously, even going back a couple of years, this process was a bit easier. The state has hired a lot of housing planners, and the bar has raised a bit, and Malala could testify to that, and I think Happy Valley could testify to that. So in this context, I think what we're really trying to do is set a framework here. These strategies would all come before council through ordinance processes, and they'd have specifics around them. What we're trying to do is identify the framework around this so that we're identifying how we think we can go about implementing these in the future. If we find through the code update process, for example, that some of these just aren't going to work, we could come back and renegotiate with Department of Land Conservation and Development. We see this as a qualitative review process, although it does have some framework elements to it, but it's not, the decision tonight that we're asking for approval of this is not an action plan for an ordinance-specific action, but rather a framework for future discussion with the City Council. We do think that some of these measures are going to be beneficial and useful in providing more affordability for housing, especially for entry-level homes and for lower rent price points in the city, which are badly needed in the community. We have a forecast from our housing needs analysis that identifies that there is a gap, and this is intended to help with that gap. So I just wanted to set that framework as an overall overarching thing, that this is something we are being asked to do by Department of Land Conservation and Development. And it does have to match up with the criteria, and the criteria is based on our housing needs analysis. The project advisory committee that we had went through and made recommendations. And then we also had stakeholder interviews with developers as well. So those three metrics are part of the discussion tonight. And that's the measurement that DLCD will be using, and they've used the same thing for other jurisdictions. We've not tried to go overboard here on this. I think some jurisdictions have a bit more advantage in the metro area. Their construction excise tax is tied specifically to affordable housing. Our construction excise tax is grandfathered and is old enough that it does not require us to actually do anything with that, but it's an option for us when projects come before the council to consider that as another option that might be a benefit. Now, we do have an example in Silverton that Emma will talk about tonight for Habitat for Humanity that was an example that they used, and I think that would be helpful. So I just wanted to set the stage for tonight's discussion. It's a bit complicated, because it's a qualitative review, but yet there are some parameters around this, and so we're trying to thread the needle, to be quite honest with you. We do need to have this adopted by the end of this year. I don't really want to see the consequences of not adopting this. You know, if it does need to be continued, I'm glad to have that conversation. We're glad to do that. But we have to absolutely pass this by the end of the year. It's something that the state does clearly have some authority over, and we've been very, at the same time, very benefited by Department of Land Conservation and Development and other grants from the state. And we have a grant application, and now with DLCD, we're going to submit another grant application on October 10th. And all in with ODOT and the grants that we expect to receive, it's around $600,000 that we've received in the last four years. So not a small amount of money. So they have been a good player in that sense as well. So I'm trying to, we're trying to balance this out here in terms of perspective on the state's role in this process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Emma Porokolo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Dawn gave the precursor here. I have a bit of a hefty presentation, so bear with me here. As you may have seen, the housing production strategy document is very long. So we are here tonight to review the proposed housing production strategy. We bring a final draft of the document itself that we are proposing to be adopted by resolution. A brief overview of our agenda tonight, so I'll give a little bit of additional background from Dawn on the housing production strategy, the city's housing landscape. The housing needs analysis is a part of that, which factors into what the housing production strategy is addressing. I'll then review the housing production strategy itself and give a closer overview on the recent changes, which we, Prim and I really brought back to you several months ago, which we further refined. So just confirming what those final changes are and reviewing those with you all, and then discussing next steps and staff recommendation and discussion from council. So as Dawn mentioned, there are many programs and projects the city is currently working on that are a part of state processes, and one of those is the sequential UGV process. This is a key piece in the sequential UGV process, which is shown here in the red bubble, which is the housing production strategy, which is informed by our housing needs analysis, which we adopted last year. A secondary piece is the housing efficiency measures, which were code amendments that we already adopted earlier this year. So some of these strategies have already been implemented, and those will be called out in the presentation. But of note, this is a, this is a key piece in our sequential UGV process that we are currently undergoing. So our adopted housing needs analysis determined that we anticipate roughly 6,000 residents over the 20 years. The housing needs analysis document is a document that looks at the 20-year horizon for the city. Based on that 6,000 additional residents, it was anticipated that we need 2,286 additional units over the next 20 years. And below, you can see a breakdown of the types of housing, and there's a good diversity there, the housing types that are expected to have that housing dispersed across. So for the housing production strategy, there are state criteria, which Dawn mentioned already. And these are essentially that, based on that housing needs analysis, we are proposing strategies to directly address where the housing needs says we, we know we need this much more housing. We know we're deficient in housing or certain types of housing, and so that's what the housing production strategy is intended to address, as well as project advisory committee recommendations and input received from our stakeholders in the development community that were interviewed during this process for the housing production strategy. And for all those policy wonks out there, the OAR reference is there that specifically describes the criteria that the state will be reviewing when we submit a city-adopted housing production strategy to them. So this dives a bit, dives a bit deeper into our HNA findings. And so that 2,286 dwellings, again, shows the breakdown of the types. The breakdown also revealed that there is a demand for approximately 500 units of low and moderate income housing. So this could be in the form of ADUs or deed-restricted housing. Note, that is demand, that we will not necessarily meet that demand, but that demand is there over the 20-year horizon. And it shows that the future housing mix is mostly single-family, which is the largest percentage, is 30% detached single-family, but is trending towards smaller dwelling units, such as cottages, which we've recently adopted the Cottage Cluster Code Update, which is that type of project. Some more findings from the HNA is that the city is deficient in the amount of housing, and many folks in the community face challenges with affordability of housing in Camby. Housing is not affordable to many, so the city is to focus on providing housing variety, something that we can have some control over. In 2023, 24.7% of households in Camby spent over 50% of their income on rent. So that gives a metric of what the affordability of rentals. So that gives a metric of what the affordability of rentals are in Canby. And the median home price in 2022 was $560,000. So this here shows incomes, this is in 2023 amounts, and the median home price is in 2022 amounts, but this shows incomes and related mortgages assumed on those incomes. And so a $560,000 home, you know, that's showing that you need to be an engineer or a lawyer essentially to afford the price of a mortgage for a house in Canby based on the 2022 median income price. And so as I mentioned previously, we have 24.7, rounds up to 25% of renters in Canby in 2023 were severely rent burdened, which means they spent 50% of their income on rent. That number significantly increased from 2019, which it was only 17% in 2019. So that is a notable jump within the period of time and something to take note of. So this 25% is meaningless without knowing, you know, how do we compare with folks around us and the state average? So the 2023 metrics, the state average was 26%. And I did a quick poll of some nearby cities that are comparable. Malala's at 22%, Oregon City 20%, Gladstone 23%, and Wilsonville was 28%. So we're within similar range of some of the folks around us.
Mr. Mayor, quick question for Emma.
Yeah.
You're anchoring on Canby median home price. I'm trying to remember my stats class. It's 560,000.
Yes.
Median is not average. Is that correct? What is median? Is that average or is that something else? Middle?
Yes, I believe it's the midpoint.
It's midpoint, so it's not average.
Correct. Yes. And these, all the metrics from the HNA that factored into the HPS, both of these studies were done by FCS Consulting Group, who we worked with on both, who are the number experts. And so we're just carrying forward their final recommendations and added a few based on our DLCD commentary. So yeah. So we're talking about affordability of housing, and throughout the presentation, the strategies are tied to target affordability rates. And so I wanted to give some context for what that looks like in actual numbers. So this is based off of the current HUD income limits for the Portland metro region. Because we are in Clackamas County, we are tied to that metric. So the median family income in Portland is 124,000 right now. So typically, talking about very low income is a common threshold that is set for regulated affordable housing. So if you're a family of four, your income is $62,000, $62,050 to be qualified as very low income and qualify for housing that is targeted to that percent. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Is that median family income, is that a single-family number? Is that a double?
It's based on household income, so dependent on the household. Yeah, so you could be a single family, you could be a single income or double. It is just based on the housing income and then the number of people in the housing, in the family. We also wanted to point out that simultaneously, we've been working on the comprehensive plan, and that was an extensive visioning process that began at the onset of that process. And so we are working on that recently as well, and we're reminded that we had a policy in the visioning for that that spoke to housing for all in Canby. So we just wanted to bring a reminder of that. And so in the visioning, the housing-specific policy is housing for all, Canby safe and livable neighborhoods have a range of housing options that support all ages and income levels with access to services and amenities. Residents across multiple generations can move in, up, and age in place, ensuring families live and thrive in Canby. So that is the vision within our comprehensive plan, which is also a 20-year horizon for the future of Canby. So that is a little bit of context of Canby's housing landscape today, based on our HNA evaluation, as well as what we've been talking about for the future and the 20-year horizon, which is all factored into the HPS in which strategies we're proposing and what type of housing is targeted. So the housing production strategy, as mentioned by Dawn, is a state-mandated document to provide a framework to address needed housing per the HNA. The state requires us to adopt this report by the end of 2025, by the end of this calendar year. Strategy implementation will occur over the next four years. And as Dawn was talking about, these strategies can ebb and flow, but require consultation with DLCD throughout the process.
Just a quick question. Anytime you have to do something, there's always an "or else" implied. It says, "I'll adopt by the end of 2025," there's an implied "or else." What's that?
Yes. There's a, that's a loaded question.
We can have Jody weigh in on this, but I think we are going to risk receiving grant, having grant funding. We probably won't be eligible for grant funding as one option, one item, but Jody could talk about that further.
I'm just curious. Anytime you have to do something, there's always an "or else" implied. So I'm just curious what that is.
I just want to say that I don't know what happened, but I did not hear the question. So if you can repeat.
Oh, sorry about that. I had my mic off. Apologize.
Oh.
The question I had was, it says we have to adopt this by the end of 2025, and that whenever somebody says that, there's an implied "or else" that goes after that. And I'm just curious about what the "or else" is on that.
So there are some various options that the LPDC has as their, as their option to try to enforce, not so much enforce, try to force a city to come into compliance. They, I'm trying to remember what they call it. There's essentially this group that is made up of housing production committee members and LPDC members, that there's, from what I understand, their purpose is really to come up with ideas to help cities adopt a housing production strategy. And so from all of this, untested, so keep that in mind as I mention this. They have options ranging from grants to help cities with resources, to demanding a response from a city for why they are refusing to comply, to the standard run-of-the-mill enforced orders that LPDC holds authority for under ORS 197. Because this is new, untested stuff that we're dealing with here, I would hope that they wouldn't jump to any extreme measures off the bat. They would work with the city if it's a resource issue, they would hopefully be able to provide funding. They're required to provide assistance, guidance. The bill that this all came out of is really intended to not punish the city, but it does want the city to act. So it tries to find the line between encouragement and outright enforcement.
Counselor, I think I can work with legal offline and get that handled.
Whenever somebody says you have to do something, there's always a
Happy to.
Say, "What if we don't?"
Yeah, valid question.
And that was just a question of how urgent it is in my mind. If it's just slapping the rest and we'll get you next time. Maybe we have more than time, but if it's like serious consequences.
Good question.
And I'm not saying that to delay the process. I'm just, I was just curious.
You bet.
Yes. Okay, next slide. So the strategies are, there's 15 of them. They are tools, actions, and policies to promote affordability. They are at the framework level, so that was what Dawn was talking about at the beginning of the presentation of, you know, these are high-level frameworks of, to give a sense of what the strategy is, but the specifics of the implementation are not necessarily determined at this phase and will be determined through the implementation process. So there are many more details to be figured out once the actual strategy is implemented. We are trying to bring a framework level of each strategy through this document. And so because there is more to be worked out and through the implementation, all but one of the strategies will require an ordinance to be adopted, largely its code changes. But policy, you know, waivers for affordable housing would all go through, both, would all go through city council. And so, you know, future adoption will go through you all, and you all will have a hand in the process of exactly what does the strategy implementation look like. So we're talking high level tonight, but more detail will come in future time. The only exception is the one strategy where we've proposed to create flyers and packets that provide help for property owners to help develop on their property. So, you know, give a packet about ADUs to help a homeowner be able to build an ADU rather than having to go out and hire and, you know, spend more money in finding the person that knows how to do it, to make it more approachable for folks to encourage more smaller development on existing lots. So before we get into the actual strategies, I wanted to quickly touch on, we brought this recommendation to Planning Commission last month, and the general feedback we received for them was they were generally unhappy with the state mandate for the HPS and not supportive of it being a mandate and the lack of control that we have as a city, since it is a mandate. And we explained that unfortunately, it is a mandate, so there's limited abilities we have. And the second one was financial impact. They were both, you know, as a planning commission, they don't deal with city financials often, so they were both a little, felt like signing off on the financial impact was maybe a little bit out of their scope as the body, but also we're saying, you know, it's, the financial impact is hard to determine because all of the strategies, you know, have varying level of impact and how much they're used. There's a lot of factors that could impact what is the actual financial impact at the end of the day. And so they were a little bit concerned with that as well. And what I'll get into a little bit later, but was already mentioned by Dawn, is we've tried to build in some safety nets for council to say, you know, this is an expensive strategy, we don't have the funds right now. So we've tried to build in as best we can some safety nets and safe harbors for you all to still have that control at the end of the day. So we were trying to show that that is an important piece of this, that sure, you can not be comfortable with it, but there is a safety. So from Planning Commission, there was not enough commissioners in attendance to receive a majority decision, so I've listed here the individual decisions. One was in support, one was in support but unsure about financial impacts, which I just mentioned, and two did not support based on the fact that it is a mandate from the state. Two commissioners were absent and one abstained because it was their first meeting. It was their first meeting, so they were getting their sea legs. So we have 15 strategies in total proposed. Here is a breakdown of just simply what kind of categories they fall under and generally what type of approach is each of the strategies. So you can see here the overwhelming number, our development code updates, which will be undertaken by the planning department and impacts changes to our code, which then is hope, is to create the opportunities for developers to take those code changes and create certain housing types based off of that. But we only have control over the code in those instances. The second is an education program, which I had mentioned earlier, about educating homeowners about opportunities on their own lot. The other is a partnership. This is proposed as a partnership with Clackamas County and faith-based organizations to work, you know, and leverage the partnerships to encourage affordable housing and support that where available. And the last, our fee-related, our financial strategies, there are four of those. And so in total, it's 15 strategies. So here is the half of the list of all of the strategies. I am not planning to go into all the strategies in detail, so when we get to the end, I'll give you all an opportunity to have, ask any questions you have specifically about each of the strategies. I'm really relying on the previous slide of talking about the general types of strategies to guide the discussion here tonight.
You want to talk about the adoption here?
Sure, yes. So most of these are proposed for adoption in 2029. As I mentioned earlier, majority of these are code-related, and we are planning to start a code update in the next fiscal year, which will take about two years, three?
Starting in 26, yeah, beginning of 26.
So a large number of these will be implemented around 2029. And a large number will be implemented through that proposed code update. You can see here B and a portion of strategy G have already been adopted, and that was through the housing efficiency measures that was adopted last year. These are the second half of the strategies, and these are all proposed to be completed in 2029 or 2028. And this here is adoption year, so the year here is saying the year that this goes into effect. So most of these will take some time for staff to work on and actually prepare to be adopted. So something to keep in mind as well. You know, it could say 2029, but staff will likely start working on it a year or two in advance. So tonight, I'd like to focus on the three new strategies, which are all financial strategies. These were the strategies that we focused on in the last presentation about the housing production strategy when we came to you all. These three strategies are an STC payment plan, a full or partial STC waiver, and a waiver for construction excise tax. And both of those waivers would be only for regulated affordable housing. So all three of these strategies are financially backed and can reach 0% to 50% MFI range for regulated affordable housing. And as I mentioned earlier, that's a household income of $62,000 for a family of four. As a reminder, we added these strategies based on input we received from DLCD that we needed to provide more strategies that are reaching this target range. And so I'm going to give a brief overview of each of those three strategies. So the first one is the STC payment plan, the Bancorp Bonding Act. This is an act that allows local government to finance STCs through bonding for up to 10 years, so basically allowing a development to pay STCs for a payment plan for 10 years. The targeted housing for this, we're proposing, is middle and multifamily housing types, with applicants identifying price points for entry-level homes or lesser rents. So this is encouraging this to be used for more affordable housing types and entry-level housing types. And that was a conversation that we had with you all last time about trying to focus on entry-level ownership, so this is an opportunity where that could be used. For implementation, we're proposing that this be implemented by amending the STC chapter of our municipal code, Chapter 4, to include a policy that grants the city administrator the decision-making authority. So the city administrator would take each case-by-case project and review them, and that authority would have to be granted by city council. Yes?
I just wanted to add a bit. This is not the first time that this will be used. This has been used previously several times by the city, one in 2023, and also for Dragonberry back in about 10 years ago. So this is a state provision. Our prior legal counsel believed that that could just be implemented directly. Our current legal counsel believes that we should actually make a resolution to implement this, because it's not in our code. This is, this provision here, we're doing prime rate, so this is prime interest rate, and it has a lien on other properties. So really, the city does not really lose anything in this situation. It's really more about, this is a bit of a softer one on looking at price point, that we're getting some justification for what those costs are, that they're lesser than market rate, and that would be the focus, or that they are lower, like entry-level home prices, that would be part of that. But this has been done previously several times by the city.
So we're doing payment plans on STCs, you say with a prime rate attached to it, correct? Is this only restricted to low-income housing, or is this, can it be applied generally?
It could be applied generally, and it has been used at market rate for the last two examples, the one in '23 and the one in, I think, 2013. two examples, the one in '23 and the one in, I think, 2013. They were, there wasn't any tie into that. One was a commercial project for Dragonberry, one was an apartment project in '23, and it was market rate. So this really, the Bonding Act, we're putting some sideboards on this, a bit that the state law doesn't, not even, the city law is completely open to, like, there aren't any criteria. We would like to put criteria on that so the city administrator, we have a bit of like implementation piece, we'd put this through a resolution and hone this in a bit. But where an applicant comes in and says, I'm going to do a price point, you know, trying to get like, if I know the price point for townhomes is $399,000 or $400,000, and this gets me to that point, and they can show that, that, you know, that seems reasonable to us, but it needs to have some parameters, we believe, around it. How it's been used previously, it's been completely market rate situations.
Okay, because I think it would be nice to open that, because we had somebody last week that had a situation where they said they couldn't afford the STCs. It'd be a great solution, and just as a suggestion, make it like prime plus one, so that there's an incentive to pay it off earlier, you know, instead of just straight market. And I think that would be fair to everybody, but one of the problems we have with making an exception, like, is this project really worthy or not? Maybe that depends on what you had for breakfast that morning, what do you think is worthy or not? But if you had something where, like, you can do it, it's more expensive in the long term, you know, but, or you can finance it upfront, the city is not out money, and people are encouraged to pay it that way. Just a thought.
No, and I think that's, those are all great thoughts there, and I think you're absolutely right that people aren't going to want to pay prime rate for 10 years if they can get by with a shorter timeframe. And, you know, at the same time, it gives some of the ability to work within that context to execute, you know, more entry-level homes in specific or rents that are less. It seems like a logical situation. The city's not really out anything in this tool here for this strategy. Essentially, we're getting paid interest over this time. The one provision that we're asking for is that the lien be not on the property that is the one getting the payment plan, but it's leaned on something else. So that gives the leverage that we would need in case there were some issue with the payment plan.
And of course, a little bit of a title search first to make sure that they don't have-
That's a clean title, absolutely, yes.
-twenty other liens on top of it.
Counselor Sterns, to your point, the project that was here last week would qualify as middle housing as a detached duplex, so it would meet the parameters that we're initially proposing here.
Yeah, I think that's a good solution, because if they're just coming in saying, I don't have enough money, but we have a plan in place, then that solves the problem. But if they're saying, I don't have enough money, please give us a reprieve, then what's enough money and what's not enough money? And, I mean, I deal with that a lot at work, you know, with payment plans for the IRS and stuff, and they have very specific criteria, but unless as a council, we see those numbers, basically, we're just saying, do they have a good, you know, but if we have a financing option, maybe that solves our problem without the need of the city losing money at all.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, thank you. So the STC payment plan, who would manage that?
It's managed through our finance department, and so we have a payment plan, and so they get noticed by our finance department. They get payments, payments occur every six months, and they're based on the prime interest rate.
So what added workload then gets added to the finance?
Very small. I mean, this is a very, we have other, I understand we have other situations where we've done liens for, like, sewer and those kinds of things. It's not a huge burden, yeah. And I don't think a lot of people are going to really want to do this necessarily, because they probably are going to say, well, this is a huge amount of interest to pay. So it is kind of a unique circumstance, because, like, especially now, prime is not great.
Yeah, I guess that was my main question, was are we managing that so that whatever the interest is, comes back into the city?
It absolutely does, no? And that's being tracked, and finance is doing a wonderful job making sure that happens.
Great, thank you.
So the next strategy is full or partial STC waivers for affordable housing. And so in this case, we would waive a portion or all of the STCs, which are system development charges, for qualified affordable housing projects. And so what would be considered a qualified project would be determined based on the percent MFI served. So basically, what is, how affordable is it? What is the affordability rate that they're targeting long-term basis? Basically, just ensuring that this property is regulated affordable housing and is tied, you know, the property is documented as such and is for an extended period of time, you know, 20-plus years at minimum. And last, management structure, you know, ensuring there's a structure in place through a organization like Habitat for Humanity, a faith-based or other similar organizations that are basically tracking that this is staying regulated, you know, who is living there, is within the income limits, that sort of thing. So the city currently does allow STC waivers per STC code for very low-income persons or families per HUD criteria. Per HUD, very low income is 50% MFI or under. Staff, we are recommending that we create criteria for developments to encourage certainty for these affordable housing developers. So say not just this is the percentage, but this is percentage, and we want to see this many years, and setting a clear set criteria so that there is more certainty that this can be met when they establish the parameters of the project at the beginning. The targeted housing type, so we are saying here for 0% to 80% MFI. The conditions of this is that the long-term basis for affordability and management, just making sure that if the city is going to give money, this is going to stay affordable for a long time and be managed well, so we can ensure that. And the second is that safety net that we were talking about earlier, that basically the decision-making authority is city council, and city council, you all reserve the right. One of the criteria you would be considering through the process is what is the city's current financial situation, and can it be accommodated if someone comes today with this request? You know, what is our financial situation today? Can we accommodate your request? So, you know, if this is implemented in four years, considering at that time, that is a factor that we're proposing to be included in the criteria. So that is that safety net there for making sure that we are keeping the financial impact within reason. And the last one here is Strategy O, which is essentially the same thing, to waive the CET, which is construction excise tax for affordable housing. So this is just waiving a similar but different fee that is subject, that is applied to construction. This is a fee that's applied to new residential development, $1 per square foot. So it's a much lower fee than STCs, which is why it's not saying full or partial, and it would assumably be a full waiver. Again, it would need to meet the qualified affordable housing projects and, you know, classify under that qualified criteria that I mentioned on the last slide. The same housing types targeted, 0% to 80% MFI, and the same conditions, again, of the long-term affordability, as well as the city's financial situation being a consideration in, or a criteria in the approval criteria for this strategy that would be offered. So those are just, those have slightly shifted since we last came to you, so that was an overview of those three strategies, which are the most financial, those strategies have the biggest financial impacts and are financially-driven strategies compared to the other ones, which are largely partnerships, code development, and education. So getting into the financial impact of the strategies, there is a cost associated with the implementation of each strategy, to staff time to implement, staff time to manage, whatnot. If you look at the actual document itself, there is a section under each strategy that says revenue impacts. So if you wanted to know what an individual strategy would have, it's mentioned there. I did want to touch on the financial strategies a little bit more, because those are the biggest lift in terms of the financial impact. So for STC payments, what we were just talking about, you're not losing the funds because the interest rate is there and the lien requirement, but there is a delay in the amount of fun, you know, when the funds are received. So not necessarily a loss, but there is, the time in which the money is provided to the city does change. Whereas for strategies N and O, where you would provide waivers on the STCs and the CETS, those would have a larger impact, that those are costs that is lost to the city that would normally be paid via these fees. You know, how much, we don't know, because it depends on how the policies are implemented and the details of the policies, as well as how many projects qualify and seek these benefits. To give a little bit of a preview, I did give two hypothetical situations of an STC and a CET fees for two different projects, just to give you a sense of if someone was to come to you and ask for these waivers, if they were adopted, you know, the kind of the financial that they would be asking for. Do note that these are based on our current STC fees, which are currently being reviewed. So that's something to keep in mind. But the first hypothetical scenario would be an eight-unit apartment building. That's about 7,000 square feet, so that assumes eight, two bedroom units. So the fees that would apply to that today are, the CET would be $7,000, the STCs would be $111,000 approximately, so the total waiver that they would be requesting of you all, and essentially, the lost cost is around $118,000.
So Emma and Dawn, so in this scenario, we waive that. I'm presuming there needs to be a hydraulic component to this, meaning we're giving here, we got to get somewhere else. Because also, the conversation we've been having for a number of years is our planning fees and a lot of those aspects, and I know that these aren't, these are STCs, totally different bucket, but we don't recoup a lot of our costs just from a planning department standpoint, and so here we are, you know, now we're talking about waiving $118,000 in, again, STCs, future, I talk about future build-out and expansion and those kinds of things. Have we looked at, or is that, is that something that we, the council, need to think about the hydraulic side of this scenario?
I think this is part of the backstop for council having the decision-making authority, which will always be the case on each one of these. I think the general answer is that this number seems large, but, you know, like, if that was, if there were two projects that happened over 20 years that were like of the size, probably would not be a significant thing. If we had two projects a year for the next 20 years, that would be a significant lift. And you're right. I mean, I think this could be, and I don't really want to necessarily say it's a waiver, it could be a partial waiver, but I think this is, again, to be worked out in the ordinance piece of that element, and also with the discretion that council has based on our financial position at the city. Right now, our financial position is like tenuous a little bit, and so like, we would obviously not expect that we'd be jumping right into this, but over this 20-year horizon, I think it'll get better over that period. But I think there is this, a bit of this unrecoverable piece to that, which is, and as I understand the STC processes, we can't be asking others to pay for something else that's being gifted, so to speak. So I think it is going to require some discretion on that piece of it. And I think this is your most, you know, liberal, I guess, part of this, is the full waiver, could be a partial waiver, could be a fraction of this, but that may make the difference for something to pencil or not. That's really the end equation here, is the discretion. We're not promising a full waiver.
Sure.
And this is, again, would be based on, you know, again, the financial position of the city.
Interesting. Yes, Counselor Patton?
Yeah, so I think it would just be good to point out that we're talking about these STCs and waiving some of this money, and then it was mentioned about the financial situation that the city is in. I think it would be, this would be a good time to point out that oftentimes, STCs are very restricted funds. Like, we may be having a problem in our general fund balance, we cannot take SDC funds and transfer them into the general fund balance to pay general fund things. So yes, I could see where we would need to worry about how we might make this up for future growth and those sort of things, like installing new sewer lines and new parks and things like that. But as far as trying to dig ourselves out of the general financial situation that we are in, this is not, this will not impact that directly.
And that is, that is correct. Those funds are restricted. I think, you know, part of the caveat for the council is, it depends on what, you know, we're thinking these are smaller projects. We're not thinking this is like a 400-unit project. That's not the vision here at all, because I don't think, I don't think the city can do the lift. I mean, these are smaller incremental developments that, like, would need a bit of encouragement, so to speak, and you're correct on that.
Counselor Waterman?
So as Counselor Patton said, this would have an impact on some restricted funds, but then if we gave up some restricted funds, this would actually bring in more property tax for the general fund. Would that be correct? And that would be yearly, coming in every year? So just something to think about as well.
One other question that popped in my head when Counselor Waterman had said that, the interest that is accrued on the waiver, does that go into the SDC fund, or does that go into, would that go into the general fund?
Say that again?
So we say, we're going to put you on a payment plan for these STCs, right? And that person is now paying interest on that SDC amount. So not only is the payment coming in that will go to the STCs, but a certain amount of that payment goes towards interest. Does the interest that's paid on the STCs go into the SDC fund to help make up the difference, or does that go into the general fund?
It's a great finance question. I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, put it on the list.
My estimate, finance will know the answer, but my guess is that, yes, it does, because right, we're not trying to make money off of the interest, we're trying to just recoup the cost of inflation over the time of the payment plan. So based on that intent, my assumption is yes, but I can't say that with certainty, and we'll have to check with finance to get that.
Yeah, I guess, I'm throwing it out there because it would make sense for it to go towards the SDC fund, because we want to try and make that as whole as possible by doing this.
Yeah, but my understanding is this particular slide that we're on, it's a waiver, we're waiving a portion of or all of the SDC on this particular piece.
Yeah.
Okay, you were just kind of backtracking.
A little bit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Counselor Sterns?
So when we are essentially contemplating paying money to have low-income housing come in, what really concerns me is how low-income housing is defined and traditionally utilized. It's not very good for the low-income people in my experience. I've had conversations with people who, they basically get kicked out of their house if they get married, they get kicked out, you know, they are afraid to make more money, they have to go manage how, you know, work under the table, situations where they get paid to a certain amount under the table for the rest of the amount. It really is not beneficial to the low-income people. And I've done calculations, and I can show calculations, where low-income people are punished in excess of 100% tax on their income because of these programs. And so a program that's designed, that we're paying money to basically punish poor people, and I personally have been in that situation where I wasn't making much money and living in Camby, 250 South Locust, and then all of a sudden, we're making more money, and we have to find another place to live, which we did, which is okay, but it's not as good for the low-income people, as sometimes people say. And I think that if we're going to pay money to get that kind of program into Camby, it doesn't do anybody any long-term good. And what it says is basically, if you make a little bit more money, you'll have to get out of Camby, because we, because you're losing the house. And so I hesitate to vote for something that would bring in that, more of that kind of housing into Camby, where if it was structured a little differently, so it wasn't these, okay, you're getting kicked out for making too money, too much money kind of housing, then I'd be more in favor. So for me, it's not a question of whether we should do these or not, it's how well these are designed, because I would definitely be a no vote on anything, any housing that comes up, if I had a vote on it, that says, you as a family have to limit your income in order to keep a home. Anyway, sorry, that's kind of-
Counselor Waterman?
I understand what you're saying, but I also would like to say, too, that if we do our jobs right, we should have the levels of housing so that there is a place for them to go to in Camby. I currently have two children in my family that are starting families that would love to live in Camby, and they cannot. So if we do our job right, we need to make sure that there is a- make sure that there is a place for people that move up from that level to go to in Canby. So I think that's what this whole, holistically, this strategy should be helping provide.
Currently, if you, if you make too much money in Canby, you move to Woodburn. That's the next step up after, after Canby. At least that's my experience for a lot of my clients. It's Canby to Woodburn.
And as part of maybe just offering like, this is framework again, but as a future ordinance discussion item, this whole qualified piece, I mean, I think using like Habitat as an example, where the end result is a fee ownership at the end of the day, and those houses are still valuable. They're, in fact, I'd call them middle housing and not low income. There's really no low income, single-family residential development that is fee owned. I would say is really very difficult price point wise to even have that product here at all. So we're really talking about the middle. So I think that's really, if that's helpful, and again, having the structure around that, which is the organizational structure. The city doesn't want to be the manager of these things. And I think that having an organization like that, hopefully that answers a bit of that, that issue. I think there's a wide need of housing throughout Canby on all levels. This is about your children and their children and that kind of thing. It's like, can they afford a place to live? This is not about really necessarily, I think that's the focus really here. I mean, I have a daughter that like, you know, and it's very difficult, and when you have a young adult, to buy anything right now, and I, you know, anywhere. So I think that's as much of the target as it is anything else. But again, back to the waiver though, it would be really specific to this organizational structure, and that they are very specific about what the price points are, and locked in over a long period of time. This is not a 10-year rebate where it goes back to market rate after 10 years, which means, means that people have to leave after 10 years. That's not what we're asking for tonight on the framework.
Okay. I just, like I say, it needs to be planned in a way that it doesn't do more harm than good. And like I say, I've seen the discussions, been involved with the discussions on how do we make less money? Why are we being punished for making more money? And we're losing our house. And that's, that's something I just want to avoid doing.
Dawn, maybe you could tee up next steps for the mayor and council.
Yeah.
Yes, I just have a few more slides. I apologize. So one, one more example, this could likely be a pretty common one. This is a duplex, fairly small, 1,500 square foot units, two units. So the total waiver there would be about $36,000. So just, just giving you a sense of kind of how the fees are, you know, exist for different housing types. So our next steps, once the HPS is approved, we will send it to DLCD. There is then a 45 day public comment period, which anybody can comment online simultaneously. And a little bit longer, DLCD then has 120 days to issue their decision to us after we submit it to them. Once approved by DLCD, we then have this long four-year plan that we have planned implementation. So those are the next steps. And just to wrap it up, so staff recommend that city council approve the resolution adopting the housing production strategy. Why? Because we believe that it meets the state mandatory requirements. It's tailored to fit the Canby community and its housing needs, and it has been through an extensive public participation process. So is based on our public input as well. And that concludes the presentation.
So interesting piece here. Just what, what prevents a developer from getting the waiver? Because the idea is to give them the waiver to lower their build out costs, which hopefully then subsequently will be a less of a rent aspect. What, what, what prevents them from not just charging market rate then? How do, how, is there something, how can we put something in place that prevents, what we're hoping is, you know, is, maybe it's 1,600, $1,700 versus 2,300, $2,400?
There would be a contractual relationship here in the ordinance. We would have some contractual relationship. I, I don't think there's a lot of groups out there that, I think we're talking about faith-based organizations, whether it's mainstream like Lutheran Church or Catholic Church, and there are examples of that. This is on the renter side of things. And I mean, to Councilor Stern's point previously, I mean, there would be, this is kind of workforce housing, and in my view of this, but they would provide some, you know, lower than market rate. I don't know what that is, but we would come up and that would be part of the discussion here, which council, you know, and the, and the ordinance piece of this would end up deciding upon. But I feel like this is a very small, our target is a small group of folks that would, would be contractually willing to do this over time. They do it in Portland, the Catholic Church does it. We've had interest here for, one of the, one church here has come to us, they haven't executed their project, but they were talking about a office downstairs and multi-floor building with apartments above it, and they would be contractually obligated to do that. And if they wanted to get, they have not asked for this waiver piece, but if they wanted to go and do that, we would absolutely have some sort of contract with them. Habitat clearly has a structured program that has been tested for the last 40-plus years at least. That is something that I think has a really good standing record as to what that is. And so it'd be those situations versus somebody coming in and saying, I'm going to do X, and then suddenly it's market rate, which is, again, public funds are very limited. It, it doesn't, I think for a scale of Canby, I don't think we really have the ability financially just to do like a 10-year tax exemptions. That's not something that we really are in a position, I don't think, to do.
I mean, just to back what Dawn said, most requirements for, an ordinance, some of the state would require sort of a deed restriction in order to get the waiver or the, the bank draw, payment plan, or any of the above. So you would incorporate that into the ordinance itself. I believe the statutes actually provide authority to cities to actually require deed restriction. Low-income housing, there is many strategies.
Okay. Yes? Dawn, we might want to check Jody's mic, because I cannot understand her.
Maybe I could repeat. Jody was talking about deed restrictions that would be something we would end up implementing for that, which would run with the land, that would give that guarantee for a structure. Back to the question about how do we guarantee that? And so that would be something that we'd have clearly identified over what period of time. What are the terms? I think we'd want to have some flexibility to this issue about people making a little bit more money, you know, at the, and what Councilor Sterns talked about. That is a valuable point. I mean, I, we want them to stay in the community, but I think that was the general answer that Jody gave.
Yes. Sorry, I don't know if this, I switched mics. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah, yes. Yep.
Yes, okay. I can't hear you quite as well when I'm using this one, so I'm going to do my best to read your lips. Statute provides authority to cities and counties to require deed restrictions or covenants, low income covenants, when they adopt their ordinances for these types of strategies. So it's pretty standard. You'd be good to go, if that's helpful.
It is. All right. Yes, Councilor Waterman?
So we have, overall, we have like these 15 strategies, and we can negotiate changing some of these strategies if we need to. And I apologize if I missed it, but so over, on these requirements or these mandates, is there any, like, is there a, like, do we have to do all 15? Is there a percentage of these? Like, what is, what does that look like as far as what we are expected to actually use to implement these strategies?
We're expected to implement all of them over the period of time that we've identified, which is four to five years. The question is, it's framework, so what exactly those look like? There's going to be a bit of negotiation and on all of these. I mean, this is, we can't be crystal balling all this stuff in terms of exactly what that is. Hopefully the council will be the same council. I mean, this is all part of this discussion is, but it, there, there are many dynamics around it, but this sets it up so that we can start at least talking about it. And I, I think the code piece, for example, and the code update, that just fits nicely into that. And, and some of those will have a project advisory committee meeting. Council will obviously be, will be a vetting group here, and some of these might be like, no, we're not even going to consider this. And so what basically DLCD is saying, well, you need to figure out, can you come up with another alternative? Or maybe some of these work better than they ever imagined. And so there's a bit of horse trading that will happen on like the details of how each of these 15 get implemented. But the idea is-
So the eight years, those 15 technically have to be implemented in some way?
They do, yeah. Or we have to, or if we drop one, we could come up with a new one, for example. Let's say something else evolves, and somebody gives a whole bunch of money to the city of Canby. That could be a strategy by itself.
So is that 15 a number we came up with? So if we came up with two, then we could just say, well, you only have to make us enforce two?
We are, we tried to, Emma looked at all the jurisdictions, and we tried to, like, what would be successful here? And some jurisdictions have not been successful. Malala actually failed twice in going through this process, and Happy Valley got a 13-page conditional letter of approval. So these are really intensely being reviewed.
Okay.
So this is like, again, I think they're watching this closely. So like, just doing the bare minimum, and that was when we came back and took a bit more time saying, we don't want to be the first out of the box here. We want to see how these other jurisdictions fare, because it was not clear to us what the bright line was on this. It's still not completely clear. We're hoping that we've made the right, you know, direction here, and they don't come back and say, you still missed it. But it's a bit of a gray area at this point.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll just, I'll just add a little bit to that as well. The, the number is not so important, although in doing my comparison, fairly consistent with a lot of other jurisdictions that are comparable to ours. It's really about, is the cumulative potential impact of all those strategies meeting the need that we have identified by the HNA is kind of, so, you know, could that have been achieved in 10 strategies if they were different potentially? But it's, it's really about, what's the cumulative impact that was ident, you know, that we need to address per the HNA? And are these pack, is this package, you know, doing that? And that's what DLCD will be looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilor Sterns?
Two, two questions, not completely related, but I, on my notes, I wrote down. One is that you said 6,000 new residents and 2,286 new houses or units, I guess. Who are we coming in, bringing into the city? Because from my calculation, at least my family size, it would have been only 1,000 houses. If they had two less kids, it'd be 1,500. It almost looks like we're attracting a whole bunch of single people into, into the housing mix. So that's one issue that puzzled me on, on the, just doing the math in my head. And the other thing is, okay, so we have this plan, and we have some of these metrics, like 25%, you know, our rent. What is our metric to say that things got better or worse when we implement this plan? So say, we implement the plan, it's the greatest plan in the world. How do we know our plan succeeded? And how do we know if the plan didn't succeed?
Great, great questions. I'll start. I think the, could you mention your first item again? I'm sorry, that I was just trying to track.
First thing, first thing I thought was just from this, from the information, I thought curious was, we expect 6,000 new residents, but only 2,286-
Thank, and I got it, thank you.
Houses, which is more than we might want.
So the growth rate is, was forecasted by Portland State University, they are the demographers for state of Oregon. Not a really aggressive rate, like 1.3% growth rate. So there's natural births, and I don't have the demographics broken out, but natural births, I'm not sure how many are occurring there, but the demographics are that this is a one singular number. Some states do low, medium, and high. Portland State University gives one number for demographics. And so that number includes immigration, and it includes natural births, is my answer back to you. I don't know how that's broken out, but these are people that do this for a living as demographers.
Not the 6,000 numbers, not what I'm, are in question, I'm questioning the 2,286 number, how that houses.
So that was determined by, you know, those, those again, were converted based on household assumptions for size of households, and that was a forecast that met the state standard for what that was for being forecasted as.
Well, most of them are going to be just two-member households.
It could be a apartment.
Yeah. I'm just, I, that was more a curiosity more than a, than I have to know.
I would also add, so, so the, we are looking at what, what is our growth over 20 years, but also most of Oregon, and certainly where we are located, is currently deficient in how, right? We can't meet the needs for housing today. And so there's also a backlog of, you know, we've, we haven't been building enough housing for people that, or the assumed housing for the population today. So there is also a, a catching up in addition to, here is our 20 years of growth over the next 20 years. So it's a common-
Well, that, that, the first question is more of a curiosity. Second question is I'm more serious about is, how do we know whether our plan succeeds or not? Do we have what benchmark numbers are we going to say we've succeeded when we are 20 instead of 25% rent efficient? Or what, how do we, which numbers do we use to measure success? Are we just passing this plan and hoping something happens?
I, I think you hit on one of those, which is, you know, rent burden is obviously one of those. I think from my perspective, the success is, is the demography of the community right now going to be reflective of the demography of the community in 20 years? Or is the demography of the community here going to be largely elderly retired people with very few school-aged children and very few schools? That would be, that's part of the success overall. That's essentially a bigger picture of this is what does this-
Could we break those out into a number or something that we could watch as a council to, to, or, or, or maybe we need to decide that goal? What, but I would, it'd be nice to say, in a year from now, the numbers changed either favorably or not favorably, in that we made adjustments based on whether or not. Because if we just say, ah, the community spirit, that's hard to measure, you know? I, you know, it's nice to have a number or something.
I, I will also add, so the state law that created this requirement for this document also created a, I can't remember the exact name, but basically like a housing office under DLCD at the state. And so they are now tracking what is built in every jurisdiction. So we have to report every year. Ryan Potter, bless his heart, does, runs all of the numbers of how many units were created, permitted and produced every year, and we have to report those to the state. And so the state is now keeping tabs on every jurisdiction, which is over everyone, over every city over 10,000 people and metro cities. You know, what is being added each year? So the state is helping us a little bit with the track, you know, but along the way.
Well, tracking, but I'm just wondering, what are metrics? So the housing needs plan is to address a need. And what is that need in a number? And are we satisfying that need? And maybe we don't have those metrics set up, but I think we should have some that we can look at a plan and say, was the plan successful or not?
So if I may, I've, I've, I've been on these committees quite a bit. And here's the problem, Councilor Sterns, we have no idea. We are, we are essentially building a plan for 20 years. There's going to be six different city councils that are going to need to monitor this plan over the course of the next 20 some years. And so these plans are an amalgam of like hypotheticals, statistics from now that are modeled to hopefully be valid in 20 years, with an understanding that the economy could do great, the economy could crash two to five times in between. You know, I think as far as setting up some monitoring whether the metrics of these things work out is a great idea, but that will be, it's going to take another, what, three years to even get this squared away, right? Okay. So that is going to be for the council, if you run again, and I run again, and Council Hensley runs again, and that, that's when we'll start to maybe flesh those, those metrics out. Because this is just, this is just the basic thing. And this is what I kind of told people in our last meeting at the, um-
Summit?
The summit, is that these plans need to be viewed as a, because people were like, well, we need to set these parameters to try and give guidance to the city council to make this work. And the fact of the matter is, it's hard to do that within these plans. These, those are puzzle pieces. These plans are the box that the puzzle goes in. So the box has a picture of what the puzzles kind of, kind of look like. It's then up to the city councils and the, in the planning commission and stuff to then build, build out what those puzzle pieces are going to be like, and put them in the box so that future people can put it together. So I mean, I'm all for trying to figure out metrics for it. We are not going to be able to hash that out tonight.
Well, and, and maybe not tonight, but the idea is, it seems like we have a plan without a goal, when we should- without a goal, when it should be a goal and then a plan to achieve with a goal, rather than a plan without a goal. It's just kind of, oh, well.
There will be a check-in. I mean, there will be, this is not the only housing needs analysis. So there will be another housing needs analysis as well, that's going to be out there probably four, four-plus years, again, as a recheck. I think that the metrics will be, did the load of moderate income, that how many units did we absorb over that period of time? There, there will be, as Emma's mentioning, there are metrics. Canby's a bit outside of the box right now, but because of where we're at in our process and we're vested to a different process than the rest of the state or rest of other communities, which are being mandated about, you will build this many number of units per year for, you know, this type of unit. That's, that's coming, but not for us right now. That's not what we're dealing with. We have more of a voluntary approach to this. But the other folks that are not vested in the program are being given an allocation and, and they're being told, this is how many units you will be building and this is the metrics you have.
So success or failure is going to be determined, the number of units in different categories that are built? I mean, that's going to be the metric that people are going to use, not necessarily the need, but just the fact whether they were built or not. So in other words, the demographics of Canby changes and we go to rent burden down to 15%. That's not success. Success is going to be how many little boxes were created for people to live in.
And the housing needs, like I said, there'll be a recheck of when we redo our, our housing needs analysis. I think part of this is, I, I think to both your point and Counselor Patton's point, some of this is a bit gray, but I do think there is, within this tracking piece, we will start to see, like, are we making progress? Are we failing? It will probably not as be as granular as maybe you're, you'd like it to be, but there will be that measurement that will be out there.
Okay. Don't want to talk about it forever, but I just, I think we should have some metrics that, even if we decide to change it later, that says success or failure.
Any other questions for Dawn and Emma before I open up the public hearing? Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. So I will open up the public hearing. So we have one proponent, and that is Mr. Bristol. If you'd like to come up to the table here, sir, and address us on your thoughts. You have three minutes, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jason Bristol, I've been in Canby for over 30 years and I've been doing real estate development and construction for about 20-plus of those years. My main focus is on high-density building, so townhomes, and I built one small apartment building. What I, what I really like about the planning department's approach to this is that they've created a framework that we can all work with, even though it's a state-mandated program. It's, it's actually a great framework to start digging in and trying to figure out how we can better our code and, and help drive affordable housing, which is kind of the big hot button. The one thing that I, I really thought was interesting is that there's nine development code updates that are proposed. I've been, like I said, doing this for over 20 years. The code hasn't changed drastically between then and now. And a lot of times, the same principles of the R1, so single-family, are also applied to R2, which is high-density, which I think is a big opportunity for us to, to do like minor fixes to the code to help address the state need and our need for affordable housing. So it's, to me, this is a great little framework to get us kind of more in line with today's needs. The other thing that I find very interesting is the Bancroft financing, which helps to spread the SDC cost out over time. It's, I'm, I'm putting up 30 townhomes over on Township. That's my latest project. And one four-unit building is over $60,000 in SDC costs. So if you can imagine, it's like half a million bucks for the whole project. If, if I can spread that cost over time, it truly helps bridge that gap between construction and sales, which is what I'm doing with all these units. So I, I strongly favor that funding option. And my goal, of course, is to pay it off as fast as I can, but to bridge that gap, I'm a small, small-time guy. I don't have a company. I, I mean, have my company, but it's just me. So it's not like I have a bunch of financial backing or anything. So I, I'm in favor of that. I'm also in favor of the framework that the planning department put together. It's, I think it's fair. It's a good start. And the great thing is that you all have the opportunity to yea or nay it, all your input going forward. That's my two thoughts.
All right.
Two cents.
Appreciate it, Mr. Bristol. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the only cards or people that have asked to speak. There are no opponents to this, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any additional questions or whatnot from the, the council? Any thoughts, discussion then? Yes, Counselor Davis?
Are you ready for a motion?
Well, if nobody else wants to discuss, we're ready to move forward. I guess we can do that.
I move to approve Resolution 1443, a resolution approving Canby Housing Production Strategy.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Davis and second by Counselor Patton, to approve Resolution Number 1443, a resolution approving the Canby Housing Production Strategy. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I wish it wasn't such an all-inclusive package, because there are pieces that I liked and there's pieces that I don't. And the pieces that I don't are specifically things that have had people ask me to not vote on. So if, and I'm not for waiving the SDCs. I like the financing piece. I like some of the other structures in that, but because I have been asked by constituents that I represent to vote no, I will be a no vote.
Okay. Any other discussion items on that?
I kind of agree with Counselor Hensley, there are things that I like about it and things I, that I have questions about it. Also, as I mentioned earlier, it seems like a plan without a goal at this point are metric. And I'm sort of concerned that this binds our hands later on. It's not super clear how much it binds our hands, but it seems like there's some sort of ominous or else that will come about if we don't follow this plan the way it is. And it seems like it's, it's, if it was, you know, voted in pieces, there's a lot of it I would favor for, but I, I'm just, I'm, I'm not convinced that it's a well-thought-out, you know? I mean, I know it's well thought, a lot of, a lot of effort went into it, but I'm not, still not been articulated, the measurable goals. It's a housing production plan without its specific number of houses or things like that. And so just very, it seems like, one, it ties our hands, and two, and I, and I'm still not sure what, what the hand tie is going to be. If we say, we don't like this project, are we going to get a fine for not doing it if, if we don't meet a particular goal, the way that the land board wants us to? It's sort of a, I'm not sure in my mind what we're, if we're going to tie ourselves. And of course, I expressed opposition to certain types of low-housing plans.
So I, I guess then my question, Counselor Sterns, is so, I guess what are those, what are those pieces within here? Like what's the, I think the whole premise, and Dawn and Emma, I might have you come back up here. The whole premise of this is to have tools in the toolbox to be able to better develop that missing middle, housing. Am I correct in that, Dawn?
I mean, I love the Habitat for Humanity. I've been involved with that on a county level. They're good. I've also seen housing, low-housing units here in Canby, which, as I said before, heavily punished the poor people. And I don't, I want to make sure, am I voting, if I vote yes, am I voting for Habitat? Yeah, I like Habitat. Am I voting for restricted-income housing that basically you, you get a raise, you have to find a new place to live? No, I, I don't want to vote for that. And so that's, that's kind of, I'm not sure, what am I voting for?
So Dawn, let you answer that, and then I've got a follow-up question.
So the missing middle, I totally agree with. The challenge here is, this is a framework, and this council or the council that will be reviewing this in the next, over the next four years, for each of these items that come before you, will make those decisions. We cannot give you the forecast that on how many units are going to be successfully done here. It's impossible to provide that to you. This is a framework and it's, that's about all we can say is, and these pieces will be worked out individually. There could be a number of them that completely go away and we come back with other things later to replace them.
So, so just, just as a hypothetical, and I'll just pick a random number, Plan C or whatever, we decide to vote no on it, is that our, is that mean the states will come back and said, you shouldn't have voted no on that, you must vote yes? Or we're going to give it back?
No, I, I think basically you guys could say, we hate C, we're going to suggest something else and place of C later, and that's completely up to this council.
And we're not going to be having a gun to our head and saying, vote for C or else.
No, I mean, we're, this, I would, these are completely flexible and negotiable over time. We've tried to set the bar within a framework. We believe that Canby can actually make work here with, there's more difficult ones that we have not proposed in framework. We think these are items that should be legitimately discussed. I fully believe that for the code update part, that many, there may be pieces of the code update piece that we look at and say pragmatically, for example, if we're looking at building heights, we may say, that's not going to work because of fire codes and parking standards. That may go by the wayside and we'll figure out something else to replace that with. But we have to start with the framework.
Okay. So the, the question is, we are not going to be forced to implement these, I mean, in other words, I'm not binding future councils?
Not binding, no, you're not. And I would say, if anything, the council will have the authority over each of these items as they come forward to say yea or nay on them. And it may be that we're successful on some and not on others.
And we will truly have that option, say yea or nay. Sometimes things come up and they.
Yeah, you, you, no, I mean, you ultimately, ultimately, there's a recognition that council has complete authority over each one of these to make a decision on every one of these, which is, we want you to make that decision. It is your decision, you represent, you're representing the city on each one of these. They're ordinance-level items. They're legislative items that are going to come back later.
Okay.
Counselor Waterman and then Counselor Patton.
That discussion was, but I was already going to bring up, we're not locked into any of these and we can make changes and adjust it as we need later, but we need something to start with.
Correct. Yeah. And the other, the other thing I just want to stress is that, you know, there has been a community, there's been a, you know, a citizen group that was formed for this, that hashed this out. The planning department has put thousands of hours into this. We have put like tens of hours into it. I mean, there's been community engagement, there's been business engagement. This, to me, this is the, this is the best we've got for now and we can build upon it. And I will be a yes vote because I feel that those people have, have, have had their stamp on this. And, you know, I need to honor their, I need to honor their decision and then we, as a council, build it out from there.
Jody, go ahead.
Yeah, you're good to go.
You're muted.
You're muted.
All right. You're muted. I had such microphones. I can't hear you very well, so if I ask you to repeat it, I apologize. I just wanted to clarify, because I'm not sure I came through very well the first time. If council fails to adopt a housing production strategy by the end of 2025, I think is the deadline, they will get referred to what's called the Housing Acceleration Program. It's a program within, I think, LCDC, although I'm sure it's, it touches all the various housing programs that the state has going right now. But that program provides different avenues to help the city pass the strategy, resources, grants, so on and so forth. If the city can't pass this HPS with their help, then there might be additional consequences, enforcement actions and orders coming from LCDC hearings, stuff like that. So there are consequences, but they really, the state's really looking to help you guys get a HPS passed that actually you want. I don't think that they want you to just pass it just because you're required by statute. So there are stages to enforcement. The other piece that I wanted to mention, and Dawn did a great job explaining it, but if, I, I'm not sure how familiar the council is with transportation system plans, it's sort of a similar framework. So if 10 years down the road, or the midpoint, I think is 10 years, and you decide that this particular strategy was a bad strategy, you have to report that to DLCD or LCDC. But as long as you can justify that and probably show a replacement option, a replacement strategy, it's not like you're going to get thrown into some sort of hypothetical prison. It's negotiable. This is a new law with new requirements and the idea that someone's going to hold a gun to your head and say, you do this or you're in trouble. I don't, personally, in my opinion, I don't see that happening. I think they want to work with the cities to help them get there. As long as you show that you're trying, I can't imagine that the city will come under some sort of enforcement order from LCDC. That would be a shock, at least to me. So I just wanted to say that.
I would just say, I would not want to go through an acceleration program, Jody. I'm just, that is going to take a boatload of time that we don't have to do, so I would prefer not to be going through an acceleration program.
I agree. I agree.
Counselor Patton.
Did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
No.
I call for previous question.
Okay. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll say aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion carries. What do we got? Five to one, four to one? Thank you all.
I didn't have that waiver in there.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is going into ordinances and resolutions. We have one, it's ordinance number 1657, an ordinance considering a contract extension with interim city administrator Randy Ely and declaring an emergency. So this is our earlier executive session as a council. So Mr. Ely has been filling in as our interim city administrator now for, gosh, Randy, has it been six months?
June 23rd was my first day.
Pretty close. And so the council, in conversation with, with Mr. Ely, feel that extending his contract out until the end of this fiscal year and maybe beyond was prudent with the amount of things that are going on here, as you see with just tonight's conversation and other pieces within City Hall that need to be worked on and cleaned up. We are feeling that Mr. Ely has done a great job so far. We want to continue to have his services in that interim capacity for the foreseeable future. So my piece to, to Mr. Ely is, thank you for coming in and filling this role. It's a lot, there's a lot going on. I believe that you are that change agent that we've, we've been wanting to get in position and, you know, and I think based on our conversation earlier, you have a lot of support, if not total support, from the council to do what you need to do. So we're really excited about extending this out. And doesn't mean we're not trying to get a new city administrator. We just want to get through some pieces that we are working on and calm the seas a little bit before we go out and do that process, which we're probably looking at early next year to begin that conversation. So Counselor Davis?
Are you ready for a motion, Mayor?
Sure am.
I move to approve ordinance number 6.
I move to approve ordinance number 1657, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator, city administrator designated to enter into an amended employment contract between the city of Canby and Randy Ely to a second reading October 15th, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made by Councilor Davis, and seconded by Councilor Hensley to approve ordinance 1657, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator designated to enter into an amended employment contract between the city of Canby and Randy Ely and declaring an emergency. Any further discussion or comment? Yes, Councilor Patton?
I would just like to say, I was one of the folks that was in favor of extending this contract out, with also the ability to extend it further if necessary. There is a tremendous amount of turmoil that's going on in this city, and it must stop. And trying to reset the thing again in three or four months is not going to be beneficial to both the citizens, city staff, or anybody that interacts with them. And I will just let you know that I have pledged my 100% backing of the plans and things that Mr. Ely, as city administrator, must do to get this ship righted and back on track. That is all.
Yes, Councilor President Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that feeling is unanimous amongst the board, so I just wanted to thank Councilor Davis for your work with people and getting this contract hammered out so quickly. So I just wanted to thank you for that, you did good work.
Well, thank you, and I'd also like to thank our HR Director, Peter Woods, for his work, as well as our city attorney, Emily.
Great. All those in favor of the new contract?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous, thank you. Now, we have no old business this evening, new business, Bridging Cultures Food Forest Infrastructure Grant. Who is teasing us through that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to invite Bridging Cultures Canby, they've been very patient tonight to come forward, Denise Salinas, I believe, yes. And I'd like Don, our planning director, to join her, as well whoever else, please join, all come up. I think we have a PowerPoint, the pictorial of the food forest. So please speak into the microphone, it's right there, you guys can all share one, but please proceed. Mr. Mayor?
Ready?
Great. Floor is yours.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Hudson, and council members. I'll try to be very brief, I know it's late in the evening, and you may end up having some questions, so I'll just introduce myself, Sarah Rodriguez, Director of Bridging Cultures. I know that I've seen many of you over the years at our events in the park, and participating in several of our activities, so I think that you're mostly familiar with what we do. I had several values that I wanted to bring to your attention and point out, but for time's sake, I think I'll keep it brief. We're here to request permission to use the Feist Park area located in the Teakwood neighborhood to create a food forest. We have successfully managed an area of the community garden at Baker Prairie. We use the produce to distribute to the community. It's an open garden where anyone can come. We have over 200 volunteers that serve with us in our programs. So, again, to be brief, I think I would like to simply state that we have Denise Salinas back here, who is the program coordinator, she's our community programs coordinator. So she's the one that does a lot of the community work, but also in charge of the community gardens. We have Dan Sloan here, who is, oh wait, let me back up. We did visit the park's planning advisory committee, and believe we have their support for this project. They asked us to work with the local community in that neighborhood. We canvassed and talked with several of the neighbors there, adjacent to that park, with wholehearted support virtually from everyone. There are some concerns about rodents in the area that does need to be addressed, and I want to make sure that I honor that concern and mention that here today. We do have a very talented specialist here with us tonight. Dan Sloan is the executive director of the Portland Edible Forest Initiative, is that correct?
Food Forest.
Oh, Food Forest Initiative. So I am going to simply say that we have the support of several groups, community groups in Canby, and the backing of several volunteers and community members, including TROST, PTA, the Canby Garden Club, Kiwanis of Canby. So I want to pass it to Dan, so that he can describe a little more about the project, address, or maybe speak to some of the issues about how we would address the rodent issue, and then open it up for questions, or maybe pass it to Don.
This is a resource, so please.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you for having me. Yeah, my name is Dan Sloan, I am the executive director of Portland Food Forest Initiative. We are a nonprofit in Portland that specializes in popularizing and advocating for food forests in place of grass lawns that provide food for people who live there, provide opportunity to connect with different community members, and provide ecosystem where there otherwise is monoculture, where nothing is growing other than grass. So this brief presentation will familiarize you guys very quickly with food forests, what they are, how they work, and what we're envisioning for this site. So food forests are human-stewarded, polyculture, perennial-based plantings that are planted on specifically degraded land. We're not going into a forest, we're going into a lawn or something that's been, used to be a forest 300 years ago, chopped down, planted as grass. We're basing this method of land tending on ancestral wisdom, this has been done for thousands of years on multiple continents, but there have been big improvements in the last 50 years that have streamlined these processes in stewarding land that provide a large yield of food for people and habitat for pollinators and small animals like birds. So food forests typically provide food, occasionally fuel, fiber sometimes, but medicinal plants, habitat for humans, but also multi-species communities, both above ground and below ground. They can do a lot of things to facilitate healthier soil, healthier ecosystems, can infiltrate rainwater more effectively than just a grass lawn. And the, basically, the purpose of a food forest is to mimic a forest ecosystem that you'd find out in a virgin old-growth forest. And the basic unit of a food forest is a tree guild, and a tree guild is a fancy word for a bunch of plants growing around a canopy-layer fruit tree typically, in this urban context. And so you have an apple tree as your canopy layer, and then you have a bunch of plants growing at different heights, taking advantage of all the sun that's falling, that would otherwise fall on the ground, providing an opportunity for the plants to fix nitrogen in the soil, to sequester carbon in the soil as well, and provide food using this seven or eight-layer design. And so you have these guilds that are planted in the food forests, and they make up the pathways, and they delineate the pathways, creating this complex ecosystem. And they're oriented, the tallest on the north, and they get progressively shorter as they go to the south, so that all the leaves get maximum solar exposure. This is an example of what a forest garden, food forest, will look like. You have your tall trees, you have a fig, and an apple, and some pawpaws in the back, and you have all these medicinal plants, you have pollinator plants, you have biomass plants, nutrient accumulators, all these different categories that create a complex and diverse ecosystem that allows it to be flexible in the face of uncertain climate, uncertain weather, and provides ecosystem for not just people, but for insects that are facing lack of habitat and extinction. We also have, the basis of our food forest is deep woodchip mulch, so we're putting down eight inches of woodchips on top of grass, and that suppresses weeds, it kills the grass, and it also starts facilitating the conversion of the bacterial-dominated soil into fungal-dominated soil, which is what you find in a forest, in an old-growth forest. That's what makes trees better able to resist pests and disease, so you don't have to be spraying them with pesticides and herbicides, fungicides, they do fine on their own when they're living in their preferred soil medium. So here's a quick example of converting a grass space into a food forest in a one-year period. We have putting down six inches of woodchips on top of contractor paper on the grass lawn, letting it sit over the winter, planting in April, and then within a few months, you have pretty good amount of growth right away. And then after one year, in the middle of its second growing season, you have this diverse explosive growth. And this site has really poor soil, it's just like clay, it looks like baseball infield dirt. So this is in its second year right now, in this picture, it's now its third year. And so this is an example of what a forest garden design could look like from the top down. This is one of my designs for about an acre site in Scoups. And then, one of the issues I have heard concerned with is maintenance, and forest gardens are very low maintenance. It's not like it's something you have to mow every week, or you have to water all the time. Typically, what you're doing for maintenance is harvest, and that can be done, individuals going in, picking an apple off the tree, or it can be done in harvest parties, where people go in with a group of people and harvest up like many, many pounds of apples, and share them with their community. Pruning is important, as it's mulching, and cleanup is typically done, so a technique called chop and drop, where you just cut the plant down, cut it into smaller pieces, and lay that around the plants for it to decompose in place, building soil as would a forest. There are tons of educational opportunities, and I know this site is right near an elementary school and a junior high, so it would provide decades of ecological, environmental ed for the kids there, allowing them to develop ecosystem literacy, which is huge. Let's see, skip this part, but basically, a community-stewarded food forest necessitates community interaction, where people who otherwise would not be coming into contact with each other are working together, talking to each other, harvesting together, providing opportunities to develop relationships with each other. Huge mental health benefits of nature immersion in this, all the studies that are done are not done within food forests, are done within, like, walking around in the forest, which is great, but this is a different experience altogether, which provides a lot of opportunities for people to have much greater increases in mental health, as opposed to just walking around in the forest, but also an opportunity for kids to not be on their phones, to be actually interacting with the natural world, especially if you have, you know, soil on your hands, you can't use your phone, so that's helpful. And then, as far as like a financial perspective, the return on investment of, for example, a fruit tree, like an apple tree for 30 bucks, can provide thousands of dollars worth of produce over its lifetime. And then, so the concern with rats, so in my experience, I've never had issues with rats in my food forests, I've heard this concern before, and so I've talked to at least eight people who steward food forests around the US and in Europe, and none of them have said that rats are their problem. This is from the Multnomah County Rats webpage, and these are the things that attract rats, so bird feed, pet food, chicken feed, garbage and pet waste are the main ones, and then if you have a big compost pile of, you know, like kitchen scraps, that's going to be a problem. So because we're chopping and dropping all the green waste right in place, it decomposes, and then a fallen fruit that falls from the trees is picked by the people who are stewarding the food forest, so you don't have these big piles of rotting fruit on the ground. So rats are not an issue. And then the last thing I want to point out is that community food forests do things that a lot of different organizations in a city are trying to do, but they do it all in one place, so they're intersectional, they provide all these environmental benefits, a lot of social benefits as well. There's also studies that show, for every 1%, you increase green space in a city, you reduce violent crime by 1%, and that is like making a park, that's not making a place where people can get together, interact with each other, eat fruit off the trees, and have a holistic experience of the natural world. So that's my extremely rapid food forest speech. If you have any questions, you can always contact me, call me, email me. Anything else you want to add?
I will add the most important, one of the most important parts of this, is that we'll be applying for an Oregon state grant for this project. It is the Green Infrastructure, Community Green Infrastructure Grant, thank you, and it ranges from $300,000 to $500,000, so it is ample money to provide for professional consultation, proper development, and one of the aspects of the grant is also to create work opportunities for folks. So not only will it be able to pay for our organization to provide a lot of the, to perform a lot of the work, but we'll be able to potentially create some work for people to be able to continue that. It's an 18-month project, but I do want to point out that we've been managing our part of the community garden at Baker Prairie for almost 10 years now. This is not something that we want to just jump in and do and then jump out. This is a long-term commitment, and something that we fully believe in, to benefit our community, and to be able to be a food source, an ongoing food source, specifically during times where food is becoming scarcer and scarcer.
And more expensive.
Yes, and much more expensive. This, one question that was asked among the neighborhood around the park was that, who's allowed to go there, or who's allowed to benefit or use the fruit? Anybody who walks by. It's open for anyone. We would, of course, be harvesting the produce on a regular basis, as we do in the community garden, but similar to our community garden, it is open for anyone at any time to stop by and get whatever they want, so.
You had mentioned, as you were talking to the other neighbors and whatnot, what were some of the other concerns that were brought up?
That it be maintained.
Okay.
That was, they wanted to know who would be maintaining it, who was allowed to use it. There were a couple, specifically one neighbor that reached out to us to ask about the rats, and they were expressing that concern for a couple of the neighbors, however, nobody talked about that with us, except for the one person. And I believe that as it, that is an existing problem, that's not a problem that we would be bringing in, it's an existing problem.
Sure. What, the, I live just a couple of streets up from that park, and so it has been a constant conversation of like, what to do with this. It's not quite big enough, but it's not, it's just an odd place for a park to be, so I'm very excited to see something like this going into that lot, so that'll be really good to see. Don, what pieces did you want to?
I just wanted to speak in support of this as well. On the land use side of things, we see this as consistent with park activities. It would be considered a minor public facility, which is an administrative review, type-one review, not a huge lift for that at all, but, I mean, it's essentially something that we believe is completely consistent with park activities. From a land use perspective, the tract was carved out, tract C was carved out for Feist Park, for the purpose of a city park, and this is only a portion of that area, as I understand it as well, it's not the entire area, but it's a portion of that, but we see it as being completely consistent with, for land use.
That's great. Councilor Patton?
Mr. Mayor, I move to, no?
Nope, not yet.
No?
Nope, thank you though. I have, there's, I have somebody that wants to comment on this.
I was going to make my motion to include hearing public comment before the final, but that's...
We'll go there now. Other questions for Bridging Cultures in this layout? Very exciting project. I guess, before we...
Thank you.
I do hear from the one resident, what do you need or want from the city in terms of help or support?
Thank you for asking that. If I may backtrack just a moment to say that overwhelmingly, the neighborhoods were thrilled to hear that something would be done, anything would be done there. So that is greatly appreciated. What we're asking is city support, permission for the park. What we're asking is the city's support, permission for the park, and then also the form of a letter, right, for the grant application. That's required. And then really what it boils down to is water. That's really it. We understand that the cost of water, and I can let Dan speak to this a little more, but it is by far much less than what would be spent on grass, grass in a park. I'll let Dan just mention real quickly about the water, and then I believe that's all we're asking for.
Yeah, utilizing deep wood chip mulch really reduces the amount of water needed to keep the plants alive and keep them thriving. And the more you deposit over time, you get to a point where you don't have to water at all, and the trees are totally fine on their own, and as are the shrubs. And occasionally, if you're trying to grow annual vegetables, you have to water them, but because you have wood chips that have decomposed into this amazing soil, you don't have to water them because the organic matter capacity is so high until the water holding capacity is high. It's really a win-win situation using deep wood chip mulch in this context.
Great. Thank you. I do have a resident that wants to weigh in on this matter as well, but thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr., holy smokes. Mr. Cobal.
Mayor, City Council.
Hello, sir. How are you?
I'd just like to address, first of all, that I am one of those people in the neighborhood that is very much in favor of something happening on the corner of Teakwood and 10th Street. We moved into the neighborhood when the very first house that was constructed there, so we are very familiar with everything that has gone on. I have watched the rabbits grow and the coyotes come and take them. I have watched the multiple thousands upon thousands of ground squirrels inundate that ground. I have watched the trash, and I have watched the weeds not being mowed by the city, all the things that have taken place over 23 years. And so I am one of those that is very much in favor. I have watched Timber Park grow and be made something very, very beautiful. If they had put trees in 23 years ago, when the developer was required to give that property to the city, we could have had something very nice. I am not in favor of food there because of the ground squirrels. Our neighborhood is inundated, and if you go into that park right now, if you walk through that park, you will see, I mean, you can't take a dog through that park because there are so many holes. And it comes, it's all over the place. I'm not talking rats there. Yes, there are rats, yes, there are mice, but the ground squirrels have inundated that property. We fight them every single day in our neighborhood, and we have to have traps set up. And so anything, I understand what they were saying about having some fruit trees. I watched the fruit tree over at Trough School, and I watched the animals around that. I just, I cannot support a food source being put into our neighborhood in any way, and there are many, many of the other neighbors who have also said that same thing. They want something on that corner, but I don't think that they're in favor of a food source, so that's my say.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Okay. Questions, discussion from council at all? Yes, Counselor Sterns.
I think I'm generally in favor of them putting the gardens on that land. One thing that I would like to see, though, is have it be in some form of a lease, not necessarily that they pay us money, but it has terms and conditions, so that way it can be monitored whether the land's being taken care of or not, and both sides know what their duties are. So we could say, you know, city provides this many acre feet or gallons or whatever water, I don't know, probably not acre feet, but the, and the duties of the Bridging Cultures, so it's very clearly well-defined. So I just want to make sure it's not something that, that in three years, like you were supposed to do that, oh, I wasn't supposed to do that, or that kind of thing. And that could also address problems with rodents as well, where they could say something to the effect that if there's too many rodents, that there may have to be something to be done. I don't know what would be done, but, so that way it's all clear, and not like, oh, that's your problem, that's not our problem. So I would highly recommend that there's some sort of contract or lease agreement be put in place that specifies those things. Again, not necessarily for money, but for responsibilities. And the other thing about that is I think it would be good to make sure that it's very clear that the public is welcome to come in and harvest, because maybe there's a sign I didn't see or whatever at Baker Prairie, but I always assumed that I wasn't supposed to harvest because it was somebody else's vegetables that were growing. And me and my wife had a lot of conversation about that. Should we go with something? No, I can't do that, sir. You can't do that. So if it's very, needs to be some sort of signage that's very clear, that it's for the public. So those are my two thoughts.
Okay. Any, oh, yes, please. Thanks, Chief. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. Very quickly, I do want to say that we created a very informational flyer. We described our organization, we described the project, and we provided links, and we provided our contact information. We talked to about, I would say, we talked in person to, I would say, probably 15 to 20 of the residents. There was really just like 30 that were adjacent to that park. And there was not a single person that contacted us afterwards, even after having the flyer or having a conversation with us, except for the concern about the rodents. So that was the only, only one contact that we received afterwards.
Okay. Thank you. Emily and Randy, with the ask for the letter, which is, seems that should be pretty easy for us to draft something and for me to put my signature to, the water aspect, and to Counselor Sterns' point on, would it be recommended, Emily, to draft something along those lines?
Absolutely. It would, I would want to review, you know, what the proposed scope of the project is, and maybe even the terms of the grant, if, I'm sure we can look them up ourselves, but probably a license agreement of some sort.
And maybe include the rodent issue there and say, you know, yeah, obviously, they are very optimistic that there wouldn't be an issue, but maybe throw it in there, in case, that way, if there is an issue, maybe there's a, there's a way to remediate the issue.
Absolutely.
I'm working on it. Counselor Patton?
Yeah. I move City Council, support Bridging Cultures grant application for a food forest with further look at water support and establishing parameters for a relationship of monitoring between Bridging Cultures and the city.
Totally somewhere in there is a motion.
I want to hear you repeat that.
That was a motion, for sure.
Can you repeat it again?
Motion has been made by Counselor Patton and seconded by Counselor Davis to support Bridging Cultures food forest in the, whenever, is that?
Down Teakwood.
Yeah, down Teakwood there. Any further questions or conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Curious, five zero. So, yeah, we will, thank you for coming, and we will get a letter drafted and, and make sure you have that for the grant and all that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
I don't think I can get any.
All right. Next is mayor's business. Clackamas County Corning Committee is tomorrow evening, and then I think that's, so I don't really have anything to report on at this point. We'll move into council comments and liaison reports. Counselor Patton?
In, for respect of how late it is, I will forego my comments and such at this time.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Seconded.
Okay. Counselor President Hensley?
Well, I do have one quick thing. I did go to the street maintenance task, street maintenance fee task force meeting, that's a lot, last night. And so they were all up to date on where they are at with the audit. It's nearly complete, and they will be bringing to us, I believe, next meeting, right, Randy?
Yep.
The, we need to adopt the 12th edition of the ITE manual, then they can work with real members, and we'll be wrapping this thing up pretty quick.
Okay.
And that's all I have for now. I'll talk about the rest next time.
Counselor Sterns?
Just, yeah, thank you for getting the street maintenance fee issue expedited. Other than that, I'm not going to stick.
All right. Counselor Waterman?
Too early for any of the meetings for this month. That's about it.
Okay. It had to be the shortest council.
Well, it is October 1st, so we look out there.
All right. We'll move into city administrator business and staff reports. Mr. Ely?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I fear I might go too long after that.
Do what you need to do, sir.
Okay. I'll do it really quick, because we did have a couple economic development updates over the week, so if you don't mind, just really quickly, do we have PowerPoint? Just touch on a couple announcements. Jamie and Don, Sequoia Logistics announced a development. I wanted them to touch on with you all in case you hear anything around town.
Oh, heard plenty.
Oh, yeah.
And then this, in the context, I see Melody, the Chair of Cambe Utility, left, darn it. But, you know, we've been talking about load growth with Cambe Utility, 1.7% average over five years, and then our population growth, 1.4%. So that's pretty similar load growth and population patterns. But Don and Jamie, go ahead, please, with that context, let's talk a little bit about what's going on in our industrial park.
And this is going to be very high level, although if you want to go into the details, I'm happy to do so, but I was hoping just to hit the highlights of this. Can you fast, I'm sorry, got it right here. Thank you. Just a bit of background on this project. It started originally in 2021, it was submitted, planning commission approved it in 2021, and this project was rumored to be the Amazon project. And then Amazon came in and made some suggested revisions to the plan, which were not substantial, and then they withdrew. This is around COVID time, when I think their sales were going way down, but there were extensions from the original approval from 2021. Those extensions are based on the fact that the project, there's not any substantial code changes, and basically the approval is, on the modification is just a continuation of the land use approval. There is several of these extensions, and then there was a submittal for a modification after Amazon was removed from the picture. The modification was for a lesser scale project, about 12,000 square feet less, and moving the building about 60 feet north towards the industrial area. And that was a reduction of sorts, in some ways, of the scale of this, but basically with the same transportation impacts, et cetera, was not an increase. So there's a modification that was approved administratively pursuant to our code. Modifications are allowed to be made if they are not substantially impacting the previous approval. We did it as a type-two, arguably, it could have been a type-one, but we also required a neighborhood meeting as well for that, and that was approved through our process with extensive coordination with Barry Elsner-Hammon, with David Duman, former attorney, with them, and a large amount of discussion around conditions of approval. This project is a shell building, and so the tenants are not identified at this point. However, the staff report goes into a lot of detail for conditions of approval regarding future tenants and the review process for those. So they're going to have to come back to staff through administrative review process to basically address the building, which was assumed to be a warehouse building, e-commerce building. And the tenants, when they come in individually, we will be going through a land use review for that to test them out for transportation. They need to do traffic reviews for each one to make sure it's consistent with the land use approval that was approved for a speculative building. Speculative buildings are a bit challenging, and thus the extensive staff report that was provided for this with a ton of conditions regarding that, and so the processes is going to be a bit different. So we had, really had to look at the detail of what that looked like for each of these tenants that come in. As long as they're consistent with the overall approval, that would be fairly straightforward. Things that alter from the approval will have to go through additional land use reviews.
And it is speculative, it could be one tenant, it could be up to four tenants, no more than that.
So basically, the, the shell building is going to end up having to pay SDCs based on e-commerce. That will be before the building permit is issued. The building permit has not been issued. They're doing, they have a mass grading permit, however, and they also pay traffic fee in lieu, which is for Walnut Street extension, in addition to system development charges, which will help pay for Walnut Street extension. They have secured a will serve letter of three megawatts. They were, that was part of that whole electrical discussion, and so they do have a will serve. Their timeline is building the shell building by 2027, early 2027. We don't have a timeline or any tenant, individual tenants that have been identified so far. And this is a couple graphics here that, this is the approved, this is the pre-construction plans that are, I believe, have been approved for the building. This happened a few weeks back for the pre-construction review. You can see loading areas and parking on the, on the, just get you guys oriented here a bit. I know it's a bit hard to read there. So township is on the left-hand side, and then you've got.
Malino.
Malino on the top, thank you, Jamie.
Sequoia Parkway on the top.
And Sequoia Parkway on the bottom. So that's one slide. This is the building elevations here that have office areas on the ends of it, glass. They've done a pretty nice job of putting touches, finishing touches on glass, et cetera, on the ends of their building. Another view here that have the elevations. This is an oblique here, a drawing that kind of shows what it looks like, and you can see the corners where the office spaces will be. And these came from the marketing, this is the Kettering Matthews, so just note there are some things I'll bring up here that, on their marketing, but basically this shows the layout of the facility.
Okay.
That was it.
Thank you.
So.
And we were talking earlier, we have approximately how many acres left remaining?
I took a kind of back of the napkin, you know, it looks about 55 acres. I would say that the biggest, the biggest parcel that we have in the industrial park at this time is 6.7 acres. It's on Sequoia Parkway. Most of them are much, much smaller. Some of them are not yet within city limits. They're still within Clackamas County, but part of the industrial park.
Yes, Counselor Davis?
Don, do you know what the traffic impact on that building is? I heard somebody say that it was like 10% or something like that, that, but.
Traffic impact fee?
How would we identify if you don't know who's going to be in there yet? Or can that be changed through the administrative?
So there's, we're assuming it's, you know, based on what they proposed, e-commerce, and it's about $2.9 million in total. The entire building is being assessed. When the office spaces come in, it'll be reassessed, because at this point, we don't know what those are, and that'll be an additional evaluation for SDCs at that point.
I think that, I think that you are answering a question that's closely related to the question that Counselor Davis was asking, which was what the impact of growth of transportation that we're going to see.
Yes.
Yes. And so I would say that that's done by traffic engineers who take, you know, a way. And so I would say that that's done by traffic engineers who take, you know, a warehouse distribution building of this size and anticipate, you know, the, the scale of it, and they, they have formulas to be able to estimate that. I don't know what that actual number is. And then what Don is referring to is the SDC fees that the city will be receiving, and also that fee in lieu, and it's $2.88 million that will be coming into the city, and that does not include the tenant improvements.
So, thank you for the clarification, Jamie. And I can give you, they, it's meeting all the standards for levels of service without Walnut Street extension, although they're paying.
Without Walnut Street?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're still meeting, but Walnut Street extension, it was tested without Walnut Street. It will still meet the standards, but Walnut Street obviously will be a relief, and that'll likely occur concurrently with this project, given the timeline that early 2027, that's our hope, that Walnut Street will be operational or very close to that. In terms of, then the staff report gets into this.
Hold on, Don, I think we have a question. I think we're, I need to pivot to.
Sure, yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah.
I did, yes. In the original building, because I was on Planning Commission when this initially came through. There was some variances given for the height of the building and then for parking. Do those remain, or is this not only a smaller building in square footage, but also in height?
The variances remain, although the majority of the building will be at 45 feet, except for the south end, which will be taller. So they've articulated this in a way that most of it will remain within the code 45 feet, and the south end, the south end is about 53 feet. So, but they've done that. The parking, ironically, with the scaling of this, they're actually meeting parking, so, that you're absolutely correct. They did, they did receive an adjustment by the Planning Commission previously, but they're now fully meeting all the parking requirements.
Awesome. And then the last question I have is, I see that the, in lieu is going towards Walnut Street. When are we going to start shifting that in lieu to Haynes Road? Like, and start collecting money for Haynes Road?
Well, and that, the, the fee in lieu is really for Walnut Street. That, that leaves, that relieves Haynes Road. That, Haynes Road is not in our jurisdiction, so. So we can only collect to mitigate for the fact that we're offsetting the impact from Haynes Road at Walnut Street, so.
So we can't start putting a fee towards Haynes Road until Haynes Road is in the city?
Yes, and I don't, I'm guessing we will not annex that. That's up to the council, but that's way out there. I mean, that would be a discussion for.
Well, it takes a long time to generate the funds to deal with these streets, so way out there is going to be here sooner than we think. Okay, thank you.
Awesome.
No, they are scraping dirt like crazy out there. They're wasting time. So, thank you.
All right. And I yield the rest of my time to Emily.
So fast here.
Thank you, guys.
This is, and this is totally not business-related, but I just wanted to announce, which you've heard me say a few times now, Firms Holding Happy Hour Open House in downtown Portland tomorrow night, 5:30 to 8:00. We would love to see anyone, city staff elected there, if you're able to attend. It's located really close to the, where the LLC conference is being held, so if anyone's going to be there for that, I would encourage stopping by. And Maya, can you help send, if I send you the email, can you send out to council with the details? So that's all. I'm just plugging a little free food and beverage tomorrow night.
Cool. Don, Randy, anything else?
Anthony, report. I, I mean, I have an announcement on there that next week, on the 8th, Emily and I are working on putting out an executive session, the, I think it's the 8th, yeah, is that the right date?
Next Wednesday.
Week from tonight.
Do you know what time that is?
We don't know yet.
Okay. Six, seven?
TBD.
Yeah.
Work with Mayor, I'll reach out and find the best time.
And just so you know, I will be attending remotely as I will be at a trade show in Reno. Yay.
What is the status of Walnut Street? Where are we at with that project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. Working really hard on getting easements so that we can annex that street. We're working with Clackamas County, and I will spare you the details on timing. I'm glad we jumped in, and the county is happy that we're working on this with them now. It's been a long time coming, so we're working on that right now.
There's a, I'm sensing a story.
We've been working on this for a long time.
Couple of years. It was not on Mr. Bezner's radar.
What?
Mike Bezner.
No, I know who he is.
Yeah, yeah, and that's.
My dog looks at me this way when he took his head.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the, exact words, so, exact words. So that's fine. We're, we're getting through that, and, and that's like two months old, the story. So glad that all hands are on deck. Everybody is doing the scrum and getting documents signed and putting together easements that work for the county so that we can get ready to annex that and get that road built. And, and time it out with ODID as well. ODID's a big player with the signal, of course. So, was not on the county's radar, and, you know.
I don't know how that is, but okay.
Sorry, microphone's picking all that up. Wow.
Okay, county's been great. Dan Johnson, his, his department.
No, they're.
Yeah, Gary Schmidt, but Mr. Bezner. I can never remember if I'm saying that right because it's Benzner and Bezner. It's spelled with Z in, and so you got to say it right.
It's Bezner.
Yeah, so, he's been, he's been wonderful to work with.
New Finance Director.
New Finance Director, the target date, starting date is October 13th, so.
Fabulous.
That's going very well. Having coffee with this person Monday is kind of like the final step, and all signals are good.
Great.
More to, more to come on that.
And then recently, Jamie, I'm glad you're here. Interest rates have kind of taken a dip. Are we seeing, or can we, or have we heard anything from any of our potential hotel years about, you know, has it been a big enough cut for them to pull the trigger?
I have not heard anything that I could expect.
Great. Thank you.
We, we need some power before that happens.
I was gonna say, we might need power.
Supplement them with generators.
Cozy little candlelight hotel.
Want a hotel, you want power. Like, what, what do you want?
We'll have a cozy candlelight hotel.
The hotel thing is Jim's deal. I'm kind of, I'm kind of half a one, six and one half a dozen of another on that one.
You guys are cracking me up. All right. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. Next opportunity for citizen input? No one's racing to the microphone?
I think that.
Mayor, man? I think Sergeant Shermoda wanted to tell us about some softball game. I mean, he was rubbing it.
Yeah, I forgot I was supposed to mention that.
Yeah.
I went to, I forgot. I was going to mention that. Waller's asked me to say something, I forgot.
So this, thank you, thank you for reminding me. This past Sunday, there was a very friendly police-fire softball game that we had held at the high school. I'll save the final score for maybe a different conversation, but the, the police department won handily.
Handily.
And I'm glad that Counselor Davis is no longer the fire chief, because I'd hate to have to speak about this in front of him. So, yeah, it was a very fun, very fun event. So, next year, we're looking to hold it again, but maybe on a larger scale and inviting the community to come out and cheer the police department on.
I love it. I love it. Great. Maya, Action Review.
You have approved the consent agenda, adopted Resolution 1443, and, or, excuse me, approved Ordinance 1657 to a second reading on October 15th, 2025, and approved to support the proposed food forest grant application.
Great. Thank you very much. And hey, there's been those evenings where we've done one thing for Action Review, yeah. With that being said, I will take a motion to.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
We are adjourned. Cambe, good night. See you.